Sixteenth, two thousand and eight, will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the Constitution.
With the same one nation, under God, in the great soul of liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Oakley, do you want to do the TV coverage announcement and the roll call for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel twenty, at nine o'clock a.m. in the south coast, Long Pocong, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orket areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at five o'clock p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel twenty. And for the roll call, Commissioner Gottstenger?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Burrows?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
And Commissioner Birig?
Here.
Thank you.
Time for our agenda status report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. We have four items on the Planning Commission's agenda today, two permit items and two process improvement items, one of which is an ordinance and the other is a workshop. We have an unusual situation where we don't believe that Clearwire applicant will be present today, but if the Commission wants to go forward and see if you can resolve the matter, I think that would be an okay procedure to take. So I'd recommend we go ahead with the entire agenda today.
Thank you. And I notice we have a new projection report that looks like it's filled up a little bit from our last.
Yes. So, Mr. Chair, you will be, Montecito Planning Commission will be meeting again May twenty-first, and you have several items on that date for your consideration. The next hearing of the Montecito Association is scheduled for June tenth. That's a special hearing on... What did I say?
Association, but that's okay. We think we knew what you meant.
I don't even think that way. So, Montecito Planning Commission, excuse me, will have a special hearing on June tenth, and that's for consideration of the Miramar Hotel project.
And does that still look like it's on track for that date?
Yes. We have released a draft EIR that was released at, I think, April first.
It was.
April first. The public comment period closes on May fifteenth, and so we expect to be ready to come to the Commission on June tenth.
Excellent.
You also have a hearing scheduled on June eighteenth, and we should probably see if other items are scheduled for that hearing date as well, whether or not we need to continue to have that second meeting in June.
The assumption is Miramar will be exclusively for our tenth, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think we should reserve the entire day for Miramar. And then, we don't have anything projected out past your June hearing, but I'm sure items will come up.
Ms. Black, I have a question on the Miramar. The comment period ends May fifteenth. I don't know whether you've received any comments yet or not, but if the comments are extensive, you have to have staff response to that. Does that give the public adequate amount of time to review that prior to the hearing, or is it viewed that the review of those responses will take place at the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, that's an excellent question. Our typical approach is to prepare the response to comments in a proposed final EIR, and we submit those to your Commission with the staff report for the project. So they'll have the material at least a week in advance, but not much more than that.
So I gather by that, there won't be an opportunity for the Montecito Association or other community groups to hold separate hearings. The public hearing, for our purposes, will be the Planning Commission hearing.
Between the close of public comment and...
After the staff reports issued and before our meeting. It doesn't sound like there's enough time in there. You've got a week for the things.
It's really up to them as to whether they want to schedule a special meeting in that time, but there won't be a huge amount of time to accommodate a special meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I recall that on the Westmont hearing, I think the Chair at the time worked out a schedule where we were looking at differentiated aspects of it, and I'm not so sure how that worked out. And I was wondering, is that going to happen with Miramar? Is there a way to do this?
Well, I think we, you know, we should probably consult with staff on that, but I would prefer not to handle it that way. The problem I found with that approach is that we ended up having multiple hearings, effectively, although we suggested it was going to be on different aspects of the project, it ended up, each of them ended up encompassing almost all the aspects of the project with an emphasis.
So it seemed like we were... It was hard to prevent it, too.
We were constantly rehearing the same material, and I thought it was really inefficient for us and for staff. So I would prefer not to do it that way unless you feel strongly that there's some particular point that would need to be done that way, handled that way.
I guess the applicant would need direction as to how to present.
I don't see any reason on this one why we can't present. It's not, it doesn't have the scope of the, of Westmont. You know, it's a single project and a single, it's more than one building, but it's geographically so much smaller. And I personally don't see the requirement for it.
I agree.
But I'd be interested in staff's take on that, whether we needed to break it into component parts.
Mr. Chair, no, I tend to agree with you. I don't think that the way the Westmont hearings were framed was particularly efficient. I think we are, we propose to present this project both from a staff level and the applicant as well as a whole project. We'll summarize the issues. You already know what many of them are because we had the conceptual review back in January. That's part of the purpose of those conceptual reviews, is to get you familiar with projects. You've had an opportunity to spend time with the EIR, so we're hopeful that we can handle this as a more standard kind of a planning item.
Is your assumption that we can probably handle this in a single meeting, or do you think it'll probably flow over into our next regular scheduled meeting? Just a guesstimate. Based on the, because I haven't seen your report, and I'm wondering how lengthy, how voluminous the presentation will be. And I'm sure we're going to get a lot of public comment, and so that's one concern, that we may chew up, as we did on Westmont, chew up a lot of our time with public comment and never get to deliberation before the end of the day.
Mr. Chair, I think we've certainly, we're hopeful that you can finish them one day. I don't know if you'll be able to, but we are hopeful that you will. It really depends on the scope of issues that are raised at the hearing and the depth you feel you need to go into those issues. I think we kind of have to play it by ear.
Yeah, I would agree. Kind of my thinking in general is, I'd love to try to handle it in one day, but if we did need to, we could simply flow over into our regular scheduled meeting.
Well...
And I mean, we might be thinking about that in terms of our scheduling.
Mr. Chair, if that occurs, I think we'll also need to consult with the Caruso team because I know Mr. Caruso is going out of the country for some time, so we'll have to talk about future dates if a future date is needed.
I'm not planning here, I'm just anticipating how we can most efficiently move through this material. But to answer your question, I prefer to present it as a complete package, and I don't see any other way to logically do it for us. Okay, unless there's anything else on that, we'll move on to the Director's Report. Mr. Baker, do you have any words for us today?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, one of the nice things that happened while you were off, and we had a board approve a facilitated agreement on the Lagura project so that that one is completed, probably one of those projects that was the impetus for the next item which I'm reporting on, which was the RMZ discussion that was held yesterday, and it was continued primarily because of an issue regarding Oak Creek homes. Other than that, I think that the board was ready to act on it, but the question was whether they would exempt the Oak Creek properties or not. And Mr. Palladini said he would like to go back and talk with the Montecito Association Board before he gave his final comment on that issue. So it will be continued to the next Santa Barbara, the hope of it is that it would be the next Santa Barbara meeting, which is May sixth.
That's excellent.
Not than that. That's it.
Well, thank you. Mr. Chair, a quick question? Yes, please. Mr. Baker, what is the argument for exempting a certain property or group of homes?
I'm going to let Diane respond to that because she's got the history on it.
Mr. Chair, the argument that was, Commissioner Phillips, the argument that was put forth is that the Oak Creek Canyon Ranch project went through an extensive review process. They processed a ten-lot parcel tract map, excuse me, back in the late eighties, early nineties, had conditions attached to that map and development envelopes, and so they felt that that development on those parcels should be excluded from another discretionary review. That was the argument made.
Yeah, as I remember, because I looked at some of the conditions on that at various times, and as opposed to many of our other lots which don't have conditions, there were extensive conditions placed on, as part of the approval of the subdivision since it was so recent, and I think it would, the feeling I think was that it might be duplicative to have the RMZ, to have those changes applied to it.
Mr. Chair, just so your Commission knows sort of the full extent of comments that the board received, they were also asked to develop some level of exemption of projects that wouldn't trigger a development plan, and I didn't get the sense that the board was interested in that. We'll see what happens at the next hearing. I think it's problematic because two hundred square feet in certain areas of a site might not be an issue, whereas it could be an issue in other portions of the site, so to set an artificial threshold is difficult. We did provide some information to the board about what the process would be for people who have an existing single-family residence in the RMZ zone, and indicated that we do have what's known as an as-built development plan process, where people simply document what they have on their site now that was permitted at the time with a land use permit. That's reviewed by the director. It's not subject to extensive sequel review because it's basically the baseline condition. It's much more cost-efficient to process, and then they can avail themselves of substantial conformity amendment revision processes that are available for development plans. So we tried to at least point out that it wasn't quite as onerous as it might at first blush appear for existing developed properties that may want to make improvements.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, thank you.
At this point, it's our time for public comment, and if anyone wishes to address the Commission on an item that's not on our standard agenda, now would be the time to do so. I'm not seeing anyone. I'll close the time for public comment, which is great, we can move forward. And we will go to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Overall, I know you had a number of items, so maybe we'll start with you.
Actually, I have two. The first actually is to acknowledge something that is going to take place in about ten minutes, I think, down on Jamison. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors honored Barry Siegel by his effort to the community and the bike way down on Jamison is being commemorated, I believe, by Supervisor Carverhal this morning. And I just wanted to take a minute to recall that. A number of us here had the pleasure over the years of working with Barry. I think in many respects, he was a model of what you would want a concerned and involved citizen to be, regardless of whether you agreed him, with him on every occasion and conclusions he came to. The one thing that you knew for sure is that when Barry spoke up, he had done the work, the hard work of analyzing and reviewing, and he knew what he was talking about when he spoke. And I think that was a fine model for all of us in the public to try and emulate, and he was missed in the community, and I'm glad he's been, has been honored. The second item that I wanted to bring up actually ties in a bit to the RMZ issue that Diane, Ms. Black referred to on Oak Creek, because that's what triggered it. And then there were two, actually, two items that we're going to look at this morning, where in one case there was the word "may," and I thought maybe the word should be "shall." And then there's an issue about some trees on another one. Without getting into those, we'll come to them and do course. But the issue that I wanted to talk about was whether the other Commissioners felt it might be advisable for us to have staff come to us and look at the whole process of enforcement because, and I'm going to use Oak Creek Canyon now, a particular lot out there as an example. Those were, I live on Oak Creek Canyon in case you didn't remember that, although I'm not part of that development, it was a separate lot. A lot of care was given, a lot of time was spent in developing those, the concept for it. But the years have gone by, and now things are underway, and you drive out and there's a lovely piece of property, and in the course of construction, there are three great oak trees that have been, that are dead. Maybe too close to the root ball, maybe not enough protection was enforced properly as the construction went forward. I'm not an arborist, I don't have the answer to it, but what I do know is the owners can't be pleased about it. The community can't be pleased about it because you can now see a house that you couldn't have seen before. And I mean, it's got to be a disappointment for everybody. So I think in large measure, we have been driven in the past by neighbor complaints, by a variety of things, and I know it's more complex than this. But the issue that I want to raise is the possibility of us taking a look again at what the enforcement issues are, what the enforcement procedures are, get a briefing from staff, and see whether or not it warrants perhaps trying to push a new approach to that set of issues. Because we take a lot of care and deliberation here when we approve something, and then when it actually comes to on the ground getting executed, it may vary substantially from what we thought we were approving. So I'd be interested whether other people felt, feel that's a worthwhile thing to try and calendar.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I completely agree with Mr. Overall's direction here. We, it seems to me every time we visit this issue, it gets down to a county funding issue. How many people, how much staff can you allocate and time and expense and money for tree protection? I suspect the community is ahead of us. I think, I think the idea of preserving oaks and other significant trees is much more of interest than we perhaps recognize. I know we intend, we try, but the reality of construction of all this seems to get in the way. I don't know what the answer is, but I think a dialogue should be had, and I don't know what the forum is. And I think we need to look to other communities and see how the most enlightened, if you will, do it, and then how do we, how do we pay for it? How do we, how do we get the county to pay for it? It would probably be, have to be countywide. But I think it's important, people are, I hear it all the time, people are concerned, and it's so much a part of our community, the physicality of where we live, the views, the trees. It's a big issue.
I just want to add, while I use the examples of trees, I'm certainly not limiting to that, because I think there are lots of examples where the MBAR has specified a range of colors for the way a house will be finished, and then it goes up, and you know, somehow the color palette drifted. Or as another example on Oak Creek Canyon, right next to me, somebody's putting in a guest house, and I couldn't help but laugh because there's a condition in one of the things here about during construction, controlling fugitive dust. My house is covered with dust for grading for a guest house. I mean, it just simply, it looks good on paper, it's been there for a long time, it's a standard condition, it just doesn't get executed unless somebody issues a complaint or the inspector, building inspector, happens to be there at the time and says, "Get your hose out and water it down," which, you know, limited staff, a limited amount of time. But just to clarify, it's not just trees that I'm talking about, it's a whole range of conditions.
Commissioner Gottstenger?
Well, it seems to me that this is not necessarily falling under what we would call enforcement. This is, it falls under the monitoring process. That's what all of the conditions are. The mitigations have to do with monitoring. Now, my understanding as far as budgetary is, is that not the cost of monitoring whether the conditions are being met on any given project? Is that not built in to the cost of the project from the applicant to the county at the time that the, you know? Because it's really not, I mean, it's like, I think we're mixing apples and oranges a little bit. There's zoning enforcement, you know, but then there's the monitoring process that takes place on any given project. Yeah. So I'm not quite sure what Mr. Overall is asking, whether there's an upping of the monitoring process, or whether something is not adhered, whether a condition is not adhered to, that then that becomes a neighbor reporting it, or another property owner reporting it to the zoning enforcement. Two different issues in my mind.
Mr. Chair, if I could just follow. So Ms. Gottstenger, the, it's the applicant's obligation and financial obligation to, or have funds available for the monitoring? It shouldn't be a budget item?
That's what, my understanding is that's the way that it works. Now, that's, I'm actually directing that to staff to clarify if that, in fact, that is the way it works.
Can you? If we could hold off, I want to let Commissioner Burrows, I believe she had a comment to make, and then maybe we can have staff do...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not for a moment to speak for the Montecito Association, but when I was on the board, we received a number of complaints about non-compliance with conditions and that kind of thing. It might be that the Montecito Association could structure a committee to act as sort of a clearinghouse for these, then conveying that information directly to the county. That would take the, some of the cost of monitoring off of the county, and it just seems that we have an organization in place, and if you could get some structure there to do that, I think that would be a very good thing that the Association could do for the community, or at least consider doing.
That's an excellent comment. Director Black?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify the difference between enforcement and compliance, and I think there is a role probably for both in the discussion you're having, or want to have. Zoning enforcement is really a reactive program to somebody who's not in compliance with either their permit, where permit compliance is not either, was never required, or where it's been closed, or they're not in compliance with the ordinance. So somebody's built something or undertaken an activity that's not allowed by ordinance, a neighbor can call, but it is a very reactive system. Our permit compliance program is intended to provide staff with time to ensure that permit compliances, or permit conditions are complied with in the field. But we don't apply that to every single permit that is issued in the Montecito area. It's something that is a program that was originally required under the California Environmental Quality Act for the monitoring of mitigation measures. It's something we've extended to more complex ministerial permits, permits that your Commission might see, but it's not something that is on every single permit in Montecito. So when there isn't permit compliance, it kind of falls to the zoning enforcement folks, even if it is a permit issue. And then it becomes a significant funding issue for the department.
Director Baker?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I was not going to bring up the other event from yesterday, which was the fee increases that we proposed because of what's happening with our budget. The board did not approve the fee increases. So we're looking at the present time, although they will be, they will be in the budget that's presented, and they will have another chance to look at them. But at the present time, they have indicated that they're not, don't have the tendency to look at and improve what it's going to cost us to do business. So there are going to be areas, if they do not approve them, that we're going to have to curtail. And what those items will be, we haven't finally decided what we recommend to the board, but it's, but it's a good chance that that's coming.
Thank you. I'd like to weigh in a little bit on this subject, as long as we're sort of having a general discussion here, which is, Commissioner, I know, we're not debating, we're not debating, because I think what we're really trying to decide here is whether we have enough of an issue to ask staff to come to us, and I'm not sure if we've gotten to that point yet of recognizing whether that's a requirement. So with a little indulgence, please. But I know there are monetary issues here, and a lot of what Commissioner Overall is talking about is really, it's partially enforcement, but it's partially just the knowledge of where there are issues. And I'm not sure how we handle that within the context of the realistic, what we can realistically expect our government to provide for us, and how much of it is incumbent on us to act as watchdogs for our own community. And I liked your, I liked your comments about utilizing the Association. I'm not sure where that brings us to, other than maybe it's worthwhile for us to look at what the procedures are of how somebody actually goes about making a report, and what the steps are so that we are at least more educated ourselves and can help, when people call us, can help direct them to the appropriate resources. That, what would you think of that concept? And maybe that would lead to some more analysis, and I don't think that would be too burdensome on staff to make a presentation of that type for us.
Mr. Chair, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that. I think it would help clarify in situations where you know there are permit conditions, but you're not quite sure who to call.
Right.
So we can, we can talk about that, because we can't be out in the field all the time. And issues will arise that neighbors will see that, that we just simply won't see. So, sure, we'd be happy to do that.
I think it would be helpful, too, if it's not an undue burden to provide it, give us some indication of what the monetary impact is. I mean, if it required one additional person, or, you know, whatever the requirement might be, to make it a more, less totally reactive, a little bit more proactive system, what would that mean? I mean, I'm sitting here in a vacuum, I have no idea what you're...
Well, we probably don't know what it is currently.
Well, that's true, too. Is that a reasonable thing to ask you to do?
Well, Mr. Chair, we can certainly provide you a range. I think what you're talking about is if we have a higher level of enforcement capability, I can tell you what it is now when we do this briefing, and I can tell you, you know, what you might be able to expect if you did more.
Right. I'm thinking more in terms of what amount of resources are realistically put into the Montecito community, given the current level of staffing of this item, would be... Would be useful information, I think. I'd like to move on from this point, and maybe you can come back next month and give us an idea of when you might want to do that. This was the opportunity for us to give our commissioners informational briefings, which I know Commissioner Overall did. Commissioner Phillips, you want to—did you have anything additional? Commissioner Burrows?
Are these reports?
Yes.
I attended this SEQA workshop with the county commission.
Excellent. Commissioner Gottsenger?
Yeah, I also, along with Commissioner Burrows, attended the SEQA training, and I found it really interesting. Really, really interesting, and very valuable for me, because I really didn't quite understand some of the nuances around SEQA and its relationship to land use and the process.
Well, personally, I've been carrying the CD of that in my briefcase, hoping that it would—I would get it somehow without actual—by osmosis, and so far it hasn't kicked in, but it's available out there. I'd also—Commissioner Overall, you made some nice comments about Barry Siegel, and I would echo those, working with him many years. He was—it was hard to argue with Barry about the facts. You might argue about the conclusions, but he really did his homework, and he was a pleasure to work with and a real loss for the community, so I echo your comments. Let's see, moving on, I think our next item would be the minutes. So we have minutes of our meeting of February 20 to be considered.
I think we skipped the divisional—
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip the divisional briefings. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, that's okay. We don't have anything this week.
Oh, okay. Good. Well, then, I was right on track. Minutes of February 20. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments on those minutes? And if not, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
I move for the approval of the minutes of February 20.
Someone want to second those?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded for approval of the minutes of February 20. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Aye?
Aye.
Abstained.
Two abstentions. And otherwise, we are ready for our first agenda item, which is the Clearwire cell facility on Mountain Drive. Now, I know the applicant is not here for this item, but I believe, given the exemptions under federal law and the location of this particular tower, we should try to take this one on. And I assume if we run into any substantive issues, we could then continue the item. But if not, it might be useful to try to get it out of the way, even though the applicant is not here today. So with that, I will put it back to staff whenever you're ready for your presentation.
The following is a hearing on the request of Clearwire U.S. LLC to consider case number 07CUP74, application filed on October 3, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to section 15303 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Ms. Hopland.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Gottsenger?
Yeah, I think I should address something before we actually start the hearing. I had stepped down on this project originally when it first came forward, and at the time, the private road that you see on everything is actually a private road that's owned by myself and seven other partners on that road. And at the time the project first came forward, I had stepped down because there were some issues around the easement. You know, for my—for the property owners, there was an issue around the easement. Those now, in this downtime, have been worked out, so I will not be stepping down now, because I do not—no longer is there a conflict for me around the project. And that's how—and then if county council has something to say about that, you can say about it. I mean, I just don't know procedurally. I just think it needs to be out on the table.
Well, I believe distance-wise, it's outside the limit of—that you would need to.
It—well, yeah, the project is 500 feet from my personal property, but not 500 feet from the road that I own. Okay, okay, yes. So the recommendation by county council is that I recuse myself from this, and I will.
Well, that's a shame. I hate to lose the closest neighbor on our commission, but it sounds like within the context of the law, we need to. I don't believe you're allowed to do that either. In fact, I think the rule is you're supposed to—you're supposed to leave the room. But we still have four—plenty for our quorum, so we're ready for you. Ms. Allen.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Heather Allen, and I am here to bring before you a request for approval for a major CUP for an unmanned wireless communications facility. This facility is to be located on a private road on the north side of Montecito—or Mountain Drive, in a semi-royal residential area shown above. The applicant is proposing to co-locate on a Southern California Edison Transmission Tower. The project would consist of two components, the antennas and equipment cabinet, both within a 49-square-foot least area. This is an aerial view of the project location with the proposed project represented by a yellow star, and the subject parcel is outlined in red. The nearest residence is represented by a blue star, and it is approximately 220 feet west of the proposed project. Mountain Drive transverses east and west in this photo. Here's the private road, and this is a dirt path that transverses north and south. The facility is proposed in a hilly region at an elevation between 975 and 983 feet above sea level, and is situated on an approximate 33 percent grade slope being southeast. Due to the one-family residential zoning of the parcel—of the subject and adjacent parcels, the project requires a major CUP and a zoning clearance. Here's another map of the project location. This is a photo simulation of the proposed project site looking north from Mountain Drive without the proposed antennas. Here's with the proposed antennas. Two panel antennas with a tip height of 30 feet, and two microwave dish antennas with a tip height of 33 feet would be placed on the 88-foot-tall transmission tower. The antennas would be painted to match the galvanized metal used for the transmission tower, and the proposed facility would cover north Montecito with a range of one mile in each direction. Here's a photo of the base of the transmission tower, where the equipment cabinet would be placed on a steel platform. One two-foot GPS antenna would be mounted on the cabinet for purpose of network collaboration. The equipment cabinets would also be painted black and beamed to fit in with the surrounding This is a photo simulation of the proposed project. It shows a northeast view from the private road. This coverage map shows network service without the proposed Clearwire site. The yellow areas represent coverage that would be provided by possible future Clearwire sites. These sites are represented by the yellow stars, and the white areas show no coverage. There's red star. This coverage map shows network service with the proposed Clearwire site, represented by the blue star in the middle. Again, the yellow areas represent good coverage, and the red stars represent future Clearwire sites. Please notice that coverage has increased in the center of the map. The applicant has taken adequate measures to address public safety concerns. A radio frequency emissions report was prepared by Hammond and Edison. This report concludes that the maximum effective radiated power at this site would total less than 1 percent at ground level and at the nearby residence. Planning and development staff are secure with Hammond and Edison's assessment that exposure to the RF emissions would be well below the maximum public exposure limit.
Can I ask a question? So we're looking at this as being 46 one-thousandths of a single watt? Is that what we have here? Or am I—or is it 40? Forty-six of the maximum that we're looking at? It's 46 of the max—
Forty-six—yes.
Of the maximum?
It's not the watts.
Got it.
Mr. Chair.
It's a percentage. I see.
Staff has found the proposed project to be consistent with the provisions of the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan, the Montecito Community Plan, and the Montecito Land Use Development Code. The Board of Architecture Review also conceptually approved the project on November 19, 2007, and staff has determined that this project is categorically exempt under section 15303 of SEQA for construction of—or for new construction of small facilities. The project is proposed outside of designated environmentally sensitive habitat boundaries, and the site was visited by county environmental quality assurance program monitor. No significant issues were found. There are no conflicts with the present use of the land, and the only minor disturbance to existing vegetations would recur as a result of construction activities. In summary, staff recommends that the commission move to adopt the required findings specified in attachment A of the staff report, eschew the SEQA exemption found in attachment B, and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval in attachment C. And I would be happy to answer any questions or discuss any issues further.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Before we proceed with the public comment on this item, is there any questions of staff at this point in time? Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our area of jurisdiction is federally prescribed—I think that's the word—and we only have a few issues to consider. The major one is the physical impact. If we can see it, we have some interest in it. But beyond that, it occurs to me that one mile in each direction of enhanced coverage is not very great. And I'm wondering if this commission might have the authority to say to an applicant, "Clearwire, or ones in the future." We all want the coverage. We don't want the towers. So can we make this bigger and get this over with, so you're not back looking for those blue stars to be filled up?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, there are two issues here. One's a technical one, and one's a legal one. As to the legal issue, the federal law states it precludes regulation that would mean that an area carrier—the area would not otherwise be served. And, you know, the idea is to promote competition among carriers and to assure coverage. The technical issue is one that staff may be able to answer, having to do with how large—you know, can you build one big facility to cover all of Montecito, I guess, is basically what your question is.
I'm trying to avoid creep, I guess. Or I'd like to avoid creep.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, our ordinances do prescribe that we do try to encourage co-location of facilities. And in this sense, we did see it somewhat, though it's not co-locating with another telecom facility, is co-locating on an existing tower that's already there. And in this sense, we saw that the addition of these dishes to be rather—in our mind, a minor addition visually to that particular site. So in that sense, we made an interpretation that they were at least staying within the intent of our ordinance. But we certainly appreciate—and I think the ordinance appreciates your concern about the creep and the proliferation of these sites all over the place, to the extent that we can squeeze them into fewer locations, we'd be better served.
With more coverage, perhaps.
No, I don't think we've ever come across a question that we would require them to increase their capacity of a certain site, and I don't think legally we would be in our requirements to do so. I will note that throughout California, we have already experienced two telecom ordinances being tossed up, because they have been viewed by the courts to be so onerous that they have the effect of prohibiting the competitive ability of a carrier to serve a certain location. And so we do walk carefully on that particular tightrope.
Well, indeed, but this is the opposite. This would be—it may be that this carrier is saying, "We'd like to get two miles in each direction. We just don't know if we can."
I think Commissioner Phillips would like to have this be sort of like XERB in Tijuana, where you can't get rid of the signal anywhere in the U.S., right?
Well, you know, I mean, we're—you know, it's here, you know.
Well, unfortunately, beyond that—I—
I think it's prescribed by law, the wattages that are allowed. I don't think they can up it.
So you think they're at their max now?
I believe that's—I believe they're prescribed as to how much power they can have. But it is an interesting question as to whether you could have less sites with more power in a location like this that's not—doesn't—has less impact, I think is what you're thinking. Don't know.
You know, except for Claire, no one's going to be bothered by it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. I have a question on the field testing. Under continued verification, you say that the—every five years, the perma-te will hire someone, et cetera, to the county. Is that number set in concrete, or could we have more frequent testing? Or is that the federal standard? And the second question I have, sort of related to this, is what cost to the county can we see from this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, it's in our ordinance that we do the testing every five years, and it's also billed to the applicant when we review the RF reports.
Thank you.
And for additional clarification, if there is a modification to the facility that we think would cause increased emissions, then we would evaluate that at that time, whether or not it's within the five-year cycle.
Thank you. If there aren't further questions of staff at this point, I'm going to open us for public hearing. I don't believe the—anyone representing the applicant is here, so we won't have a presentation from the applicant, but I will open it to a public comment. And I don't believe we have any speaker slips, but if anybody wishes to address us—not seeing anyone—I will close the time for public comment. And so it's back to us for any additional questions of staff.
Mr. Chair, ex parte?
Ex parte, yes. Thank you very much. I did skip over that. Commissioner Phillips, your ex parte communication site visit.
No ex parte communication with the applicant, and I did not—I don't even know how to get up there, actually. I didn't go up there.
Commissioner Burrows?
I couldn't figure out how to find it either, so I'm sorry I didn't get there.
Commissioner Overall?
I have nothing to report.
Well, I did visit this. I didn't walk up to it, but I did go up the road. And it is—yes, with the truck, that's exactly right. It is a little difficult to get back there. It's a pretty location back there. So that's it. No ex parte communications at all. So concluding that portion, then it's back to us for additional questions. Please, Commissioner Overall.
On the revised conditions in your memo of April 16, under number 10, project review, there's a word—
review, there's a word in there, this kind of ties into my earlier discussion about whatever, whatever word you want to put on it. There is, at the end of the second line, the director may. This is one of those cases where I would feel more comfortable if it said the director shall, because you then look down, and particularly in, in A, Michael, it actually goes to some of the things you're talking about. If there are significant changes in, in, at least the way I read it, which may be wrong, but if there are technological advances that are made, five years out, or ten years out, whenever it took place, we could say, I think, you need to upgrade the facility and get more coverage without making it bigger or another location. So, it just seems to me that this is one of those instances where requiring something to be done and not being, having the possibility of overlook might be a good, good idea. I may have misread it, but that was my reaction to it, so.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I think this is a situation, we don't actually use "may" that often. We usually are pretty directive in our conditions, and this is a, a situation where the ordinance provides that the director can do this, but it's not compulsory. And I would hate to require the director to undertake a review of every single telecom permit if technology hadn't changed. And as, as an aside, I think we're going to be looking at revising our telecommunications ordinance to reflect some developments in the law and court cases that will perhaps tone back on the, the level of conditioning that we place on, on some of these permits. This is a very unusual permit condition. I don't, except for energy facilities, I don't think there's another facility in the county where we have such a, a wide re-opener on a permit. So, I think my recommendation would, would be just to leave it as, as it stands. But I, I certainly understand your, your concern.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Is, it's an unusual, it's unusual, this particular applicant, or the telecommunications sighting in, in general?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, the ordinance that provides for permitting of telecommunication facilities, I think, is, is an unusually broad and permissive ordinance in terms of the county's ability to go back in and make modifications to permits.
Right, really? And because of recent cases, there's a little more ability, so you're seeing, it's amending your ordinance-
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think there's some reason to be more cautious about our authority.
It doesn't look like there's any other questions of staff. This seems like, to me, this particular facility is really an example of a great place, a great, you know, this is exactly how we want to see these facilities handled, so this one's pretty straightforward. So unless there's further comments, I'm going to close the, close the public hearing, and-
Would you like a motion?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept staff recommendation with the revised conditions contained in the April sixteenth memo.
And I second that.
It's moved and seconded to move forward the staff's recommendations. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye. Passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Our next item, when staff is, do we need a brief break here?
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
We'll take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we'll be handling the Danielson tentative map.
For the following: A, zero seven TPM one, application filed January eighteenth, two thousand and seven; B, zero eight CDH five, application filed March twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight; and to approve mitigated negative declaration zero seven NGD forty-five, pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
If I may, for this item, if I may introduce Rachel Van Mollum from our office.
Hello, Rachel. Nice to meet you. What, what was your last name again? How was that?
It's Van Mollum.
Van Mollum.
Van Mollum.
Thank you. So, we're ready for the presentation on this item.
Good morning. My name's Alan Bell. I'm a planner with the Development Review Division, and I'm the project manager on the Danielson applications, which actually consists of two applications submitted by the Danielson group. One is for a vesting tentative parcel map, and the second application is for a coastal development permit with hearing for a demolition. The project site itself is located just a few hundred feet south of Highway one oh one, near the junction of Jamison, South Jamison Road and Danielson Road, kind of between Olive Mill and Edge Cliff Lanes. The parcel is within the coastal zone. It's also within the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, and it's designated seven R one for single-family residences. The project site itself is outlined in the red dashes here, and it actually consists currently of two separate legal parcels. The one parcel is about a third of an acre in size, the lower one. The upper one's about two-thirds of an acre, so we have about a one-acre project site. There are currently several structures on the properties, and they include, as I'll point out here, two single-family residences exist on the northern lot. This is one parcel. One residence here, second residence here, and then on the southern parcel, there's an existing duplex that exists on the property. There are also several accessory buildings. The dwelling units are currently used as, as rental units. The proposal that we have before us today for the vesting tentative parcel map is to merge the existing two parcels and then subdivide the essentially one-acre parcel into four lots that total approximately a little over eleven thousand square feet each. So, we've outlined the four parcels and the proposed division on this map. The application for the coastal development permit is to demolish the existing structures on the property. The intent of the applicant is ultimately to develop the property with a residence on each of the four parcels. And as a result, when we looked at this from an environmental review perspective, as well as our staff report, we actually looked at what the foreseeable residential development would be, and analyzed that as part of our environmental document and as part of the staff report. I'll also note that the staff report is a revised staff report, and that's really for two reasons. After we released the initial staff report, there were two changes. One, the applicant eliminated off-site drainage improvements that were originally proposed. So, that required some additional analysis by staff and some changes and revisions to the environmental document, as well as the staff report. We also received an application for the demolition. That is, the applicant submitted an application for the coastal development permit and requested staff to process it concurrently with the parcel map, since the coastal development permit does require a hearing, since we're in the, in the, in the appeals jurisdiction. So, that helps streamline the process for them. So, those are the changes you'll see in terms of strikeouts and additions to the revised staff report. There were a couple of initial issues that we looked at and that you should think about as we go through this. One is, as I indicated, surface water drainage. We are anticipating that there would be new development on the property, so we were interested in knowing whether there would be any effects on adjacent properties, or potentially effects on any other sensitive resources from any possible increases in drainage and surface water runoff. The second point is, is that there are archaeological sites in the vicinity. There are several structures on this property. They are older than fifty years old, so there was a potential for impacts on historic resources. The property, as we view, does include a number of native oaks and non-native trees as well, so we were interested in looking at what the potential effects could be in terms of an aesthetic standpoint, as well as a biological standpoint. And then lastly, the property is located very close to Highway one oh one, so there were concerns about possible impacts on noise-sensitive uses, such as the future residential development. We did determine that a mitigate, that a initial study and ultimately a mitigated negative declaration was required. We found that there were potential impacts from the project. We developed twenty-six mitigation measures to address a number of key topics, which included things like visual resources, air quality, cultural resources, fire protection, noise, land use, circulation, and also flooding. We found with the imposition of those, in conjunction with some mitigation letters that were submitted by various departments, including Environmental Health Services, Flood District, and the Air Pollution Control District, that the project with those mitigation measures would not have any significant impacts on the environment. We circulated the mitigated negative declaration for thirty days for public comment. We received one written comment during that period, and the comment was to the effect that mergers should not be used to create additional parcels. But in analyzing that, we found that the project does comply with the applicable density and size requirements, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, and as a result, that didn't prompt any changes in the environmental document. In terms of plan consistency, we found that services are available to serve this future residential development. The properties are currently served by municipal water and sewer, and fire and police protection and other services are also available. Future development would also be served by that, by the same municipal services. And we do have conditions requiring formal can and will serve letters from the sewer and water district prior to recordation. In terms of surface water drainage, this is a key issue that we put some time to and worked with flood control and with the applicant, and I believe they have their engineer here present today, if you have further questions. But essentially, the applicant turned in a preliminary drainage study. And what they showed is that the proposed development would not increase runoff from the project site, and it would not change the existing drainage patterns on the property, which essentially what happens now is there's no formal drainage system. Water simply kind of runs off onto Danielson Street or onto an adjacent property. So, they're not proposing that any changes would take place as a result of that. But it's important to recognize that the study is based on some important assumptions regarding the size of future development. And what they essentially did is looked at the size of structures that could potentially be allowed using the floor area provisions in the Montecito guidelines. And they came up with some figures that total about footprints of about twenty-five-hundred square feet per house, with an additional eight-hundred square feet for an accessory building, such as a garage. And then they took those figures and combined them to compare what the proposed future development might look like in terms of runoff and drainage versus what exists now. And again, the standard that we reached and is stated in their report is that there would be no change in drainage pattern or runoff. So, what we did is we put a couple of measures in to assure that this would be correct. One is we've required them to submit a formal drainage plan that needs to be reviewed by flood control and planning and development prior to recordation of the map, to verify the results of the preliminary study. We also put in some conditions that recognize that, you know, the assumptions in the report could constrain future development on this site. That is, larger structures could result in greater runoff, which would be inconsistent with the provisions and the conditions of approval for this parcel map. So, if that happens, they would need to come back in for some type of review and perhaps a modification of the map to demonstrate that they could handle this stormwater runoff in an adequate manner. There's also a provision that requires a notice to future property owners to be filed to provide clear notice of, of that requirement. There are some provisions that require, and actually prohibit, the removal of affordable housing within the coastal zone under some circumstances. The existing residences on the property are used for rentals. We worked with the Comprehensive Planning Division to look at that and concluded that based on the current rents, the existing structures are not, they don't fall into the affordable category. So, that was not, not an issue. As we spoke, there were some issues regarding noise. The primary noise source is Highway one oh one. The applicant submitted a noise study that included recommendations for mitigation, because some portions of the northern part of the proposed two lots, lots one and four, would have noise levels that exceed the threshold. And so, they proposed mitigation measures for future construction and outside features that would reduce noise levels to an acceptable level. We also anticipated that future construction and demolition activities could have noise effects, so there are standard conditions dealing with hours of construction activities, and also provisions for ensuring that onsite stationary equipment doesn't exceed certain noise thresholds. As I mentioned, future development is really going to result in a, single-family residence and accessory structures on each of the four parcels. We don't have any particular design at this time, so that's not part of our review, but we did put in the standard conditions to ensure that we would protect visual resources and the character of the area. And those really deal with a number of provisions, including the fact that future development will be subject to a coastal development permit with a hearing. It also requires review by the Montecito Planning Commission, and then we included standard provisions dealing with aesthetics that include things dealing with landscaping, exterior lighting, building materials, and similar, similar conditions that we would expect to refine, and found that those would, would result in a consistent project. The last two consistency issues deal with biological resources. As I mentioned, there are native oaks on the property. There are also a number of non-native trees, some of which fall into the specimen category. The applicant submitted a landscape plan to document the existing trees. They also submitted an arborist report, and ultimately, what we found is that the oak trees would all be preserved. There are about six moderate-to-large-size, non-native trees that would be removed, but we found those were only, weren't ones that would affect the character of the property given the species. And we're talking about primarily liquid amber trees, pepper trees, and a couple of walnuts that are, you know, fairly moderate size. The larger trees, like there's a very large ficus on the property, those would be protected. And we also affected that through a tree protection and restor, and replacement plan as a condition of approval. Just the last point in terms of consistency is that the property is Zone seven R one. That means, under the comprehensive plan, we have a minimum parcel size of seven thousand acres, pardon me, seven thousand square feet. And then we also have a density, a maximum density of four-point-six dwelling units per acre. This property, given its configuration and size, actually comes in with development that's slightly less dense than what's allowed. It's the maximum that can be allowed on the property, but we actually come in with three-point-eight acres per dwelling. And then also the proposed parcel sizes, which are a little over eleven thousand square feet each, so there's no issue there. We also took the step of looking at the Montecito Growth Management Ordinance and what would be required under that, so again, we could present everything at one hearing and keep things moving along. We found that there are two existing parcels that we've spoken about, and there is a duplex on one of them, and there's two residences on the other parcel. Now, under the seven R one designation, what's really allowed is a single-family dwelling on each parcel. So, we concluded that while we have two residences on one parcel, we really can kind of credit that for one single-family dwelling. The other one is essentially a, a non-conforming structure. Similar with the duplex, we found it would be non-conforming, but would essentially result in one existing residence. So, ultimately, what we concluded is that in terms of point requirements, that we looked at two additional parcels and two additional dwellings, and then calculated and recommended the points for each of those, and in this case, it's Lot two and Lot four, and recommended ninety points each for those. We attached a worksheet in the back of the report, the staff report, that kind of summarizes and tallies that, that point calculation. So, in summary, what we recommend is that you adopt the required findings that we presented in Attachment A, including the findings for the CEQA document. We also recommend that you approve the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the point allocations that are presented in, in the staff report, and then also approve the project subject to conditions of approval, which in this case, what we've done is we've actually broken those conditions out. One set of conditions for the parcel map, which are in Attachment C, one set of conditions for the- for the coastal development permit in Attachment D, and then we also have the findings in Section A, which have findings for the SEQA document as well as findings for the tentative parcel map, and also separate findings for the coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Now's the time for us to declare our ex parte visits and, or ex parte communication and site visits. And I'll start with Commissioner Gostangere.
None.
Commissioner Overall.
None.
Commissioner Burrows.
I did a site visit.
And Commissioner Phillips.
No ex parte communication. I did a site visit.
I should correct, I did a site visit.
Yeah, I assumed everyone had done site visits. I was going, boy, we're really getting lazy here these days. And I'm very familiar with the site and, but no ex parte communications.
Mr. Chair, I did talk to Steve Welton on the telephone. I think he invited me to the site. That may be an ex parte communication. That's all we discussed, however.
Okay. Thank you for that. And we're ready for the applicant's presentation at this time.
Good morning. My name's Steve Welton. I work for Suzanne Elitch Planning and Permitting Services. We're the agent for the applicant. With me today is Mike Cassessi, our entire design team, and Steve Puglisi, who's one of the owners of the project. Alan did a pretty thorough job, so I'll, I'll go pretty quickly here. We have a brief presentation, then we're here for questions. What you're looking at right now is a picture of the site that Alan described, and that's the outline. It's a little bit difficult to see on this screen, but you can see the oak trees are the darker ones here, and they're all on the perimeter of the property, and the, the large ficus is this one right here that he described. That's the configuration that Alan went through. You can see the recently approved development up here. A little bit closer in again, easier to see some of those oak trees that we're going to retain on the site. And you can also see the development. I won't go through that, though, since you've already seen that from Alan. Just a quick photographic tour of the properties. If you weren't there, it's looking north and south on Danielson. And then starting from the northern property, the existing development, there's the residence on 1395 Danielson, some of the accessory structures in the center of the property. That's looking at the Danielson from the street. And that's the garage that supports the development on that side. On the southern end, there's another duplex, and a garage supporting that as well as a studio. And again, this, this is looking at those same structures in the center of the property. This is our tentative map, and it just shows the boundaries of the development here. Alan already showed you what the existing configuration is. We're changing it to that configuration. Part of the proposal is to build an entry drive. It's one-way on these two ends, and then it widens to two lanes. We got this approved through the fire department. Each property or each parcel will have their own development envelope. The ficus remains. It's a pretty big feature of the property, and we wanted to make sure we retain that. It's part of the reason why the, we bifurcated the, the road, was retain not only that tree but the oak trees that are on the properties. All those oak trees are retained, and most of the large, non-native trees are retained also, however, the ones within the building envelope are subject to removal. And we're not going to relocate the big yellow house, don't worry. That's just a sample home. Project summary, we do meet all the requirements and standards of the Montecito Community Plan and Map Act. As Alan pointed out, we're well in excess of the minimum 7,000 square foot per lot, so we don't think we're building any mansions here. The density impact is, is pretty minimal. There's four existing dwelling units on the property, and the parcels will support single-family dwellings each, one apiece. It's pretty flat, so there's minimal grading and site preparation required. And as we said earlier, retaining the trees to the extent feasible, all the native trees are retained. Also, as Alan pointed out, we do have to come back to you for, or whoever may purchase the, the units or the parcels would have to come back to the planning commission for review of their new dwelling. And in addition, Board of Architectural Review and staff would review those developments. So that's really all we have. Again, we have Mike here to address any issues you might have for him or myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, so you have any questions of the applicant at this point? Not seeing any. We will move on and open us up for a public comment. I don't believe we have any speaker slips, and, but if anyone wishes to address us on this item, now would be the time to do so. Not seeing anyone. I'll close the time for public comment. And we are ready for questions of staff and deliberation on this item. Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. Could we please have clarification on vesting tentative parcel map as opposed to a non-vesting tentative parcel map?
Yes, I'd be happy to address that. The, the difference is that with the vesting tentative map, it essentially confers a vested right for future development based on the ordinances and standards that are effect at the time the application is deemed complete. And the way that works in terms of timing is that the vesting lasts for essentially a year with an opportunity for an additional one-year extension. So that's really the difference between a vesting map and just a straight tentative parcel map. It really confers that vested right under, under existing ordinances and provisions.
For one year.
For one year, and then the applicant does have an opportunity to request a one-year extension beyond that. So it could be up to two years.
So if I could clarify that, so under a vesting map, it still only vests for a single year as opposed to conceivably ordinances could change and a map. We could approve this project and it would otherwise be subject to modification if they hadn't commenced construction? Is that how it works?
Yeah, in this case...
I'm, I'm struggling with the differential, differentiation between a regular map and a, a vesting map, because I thought a regular map, when approved, had a time period in which it could be executed.
Well, there are provisions, of course, for recording and timeframes for recording a regular map.
Oh, so, so we're not talking about, this is related to the recording process?
Well, it's related to the recording process, but it really relates to, you know, in addition to the recording of the map itself, there are other, other vesting that takes place with that, which normally may not be applicable to the map.
I'm, I'm still a little unsure. I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure if it's important for the purposes of this, but I think we'd like to understand it, just, if you could. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, as Mr. Bell stated, really what a vesting tentative map does is frees in place for that map the ordinances, standards, laws that are applicable at the time, you know, that the map is complete, that the application for the map is complete.
But that, that would go forward in time, does it not?
Yes, it does.
It's not just for the year. It's, isn't that set in place for the ultimate development of the property under the conditions that the map's approved?
It is set in place so long as the permit which was applied for is still alive.
Is still valid.
We do put time limits on the, well, the map has to be recorded within a certain amount of time.
So, Mr. Chair, just for a little bit more clarification, most, first of all, if somebody applies for a vesting parcel map or tentative map, your commission can't say, no, we won't approve a vesting map, we'll approve it as a straight map. So they have the right to apply for it, and if it meets the standards for approval, then the commission is compelled to approve it as a vesting map. Secondly, most people do apply for a vesting map to essentially set fees, mitigation fees at the time of, of completeness of their map. Sometimes other regulations change and become more restrictive, and those wouldn't apply either to a vesting map during its vested period. But, but I think the important thing for you to know is, you really don't have an option. You either approve the map as submitted or, or you don't. You can't not approve a vesting, the vesting portion of the tentative map.
I don't think we were suggesting we were trying to change it, just more to understand the distinctions between the two.
It just provides some additional protections and, and freezes standards.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bell, I want to revisit your discussion regarding noise abatement. It seemed to me that you said that the noise from 101 was such that, was at a sufficient level that without mitigation, that perhaps this couldn't be approved. I don't see abatement issues, and this must impact everything along there, including the Miramar. I'm just, I haven't heard that. Is that a zoning condition, that you could well be too close to, to the noise of 101 and therefore you, you can't build on your property?
Well, as part of, where it typically kind of first arises is within the environmental review process, where we have some provisions that actually have decibel levels and talk about noise-sensitive uses, which include residences. So as part of this effort and part of development that takes place in areas where we suspect there may be a noise issue, and we do have some inventory maps that are available to help guide us initially, that actually show decibel levels and where there may be a potential noise issue. So in those cases, we typically then require the applicant to submit a formal noise study. And that's what we did in this case, where the applicant hires a specialist to go out on the property and take measurements over periods of time to determine whether or not we've essentially have portions of the property that exceed noise levels. And in this case, what their consultant determined is that some of the northern portions of this property, which are approximately 200 feet from Highway 101, would exceed, would meet or exceed the threshold level. They also then took it a little step further and looked at what future increases in traffic would, would result in, in terms of additional traffic, additional noise. And they found that, in fact, there would be increases in traffic, and that would bump things up a little higher. So as a result of that, they came in and their noise specialist recommended several types of conditions for the exterior essentially of the structure to make sure that those noise levels wouldn't exceed those thresholds interior, inside the structure. And there's also some provisions for some small walls and stuff on the exterior. And those are incorporated as conditions of approval. So in order to find in the environmental document, for example, that there wouldn't be a significant impact, we were able to do so with those mitigation measures. And so those were incorporated into the conditions of approval for the tentative parcel map. They're also within the mitigated negative declaration as mitigation measures.
So it, it requires a SEQA review to trigger this?
Well, actually, there are some provisions also, and let me just go to the staff report. Actually, on page 19 of the staff report, there are some policies that talk about, that are from the comprehensive plan as well as the Montecito Community Plan that talk about noise. So there's actually provisions that we have to address under environmental review in terms of determining threshold levels and whether there would be a significant impact. But there's also a consistency component that we address within, within the staff report itself. And as you'll see, for example, in the first policy that cited, it's, begins as CP noise element, it, it actually talks about a 65 decibel threshold, and that's the threshold we were applying to this property.
And what is the mitigation? Is it, is it baffling or some kind of insulation?
Yeah, it ranges from construction techniques, which can be as simple as the type of windows that are installed, to also things that are minor in nature, such as ensuring that if there are any openings in the building, such as for ventilation or other things, that those are properly baffled and, and screened to prevent noise from entering the building. So it deals with a number of things, and actually, within the conditions, they go through and are very, are very specific about what's, what's to be required based on the recommendations of the noise specialist. And those then will have to be followed up, and as part of the coastal development permits for the houses, will ensure that those two houses on the northern part of the property comply with those conditions. What they found is that the southern part of the property, the noise levels decreased enough that those were not issues. So you can see that, you know, it can change in a fairly short distance in terms of where the threshold is, and also into any intervening topography or buildings also affect the study.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think we've seen a noise issue before. Very interesting.
Commissioner Overall.
Mr. Bell, I want to go to the first item on your issue summary, which was the water, surface water drainage. I don't, I have not reviewed if we have it in the packet, and we probably did, the plan that was submitted back in April of 2007 for the development. So I'm not sure how it changed versus what was submitted in March of this year, but clearly there must have been some concern related to, to drainage because they were trying to get an easement to take water, channel it offsite. Was the, was the original development proposed in April of '07 for a larger set of development than, than the current March of '08 proposal?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, no, the development remained the same. The distinction was is that when they had initial discussions with flood control, they were talking about the fact that currently water essentially kind of runs east and west on this site, so some of it drains onto Danielson, some of it just essentially kind of flows onto the adjacent property. So initially, the applicant came up with a very structured drainage system onsite, which then fed into a pipe that would go across the adjacent property and link into an existing stormwater drainage pipe. And what ultimately they found is that there were some conditions that had to be attached to that because the pipe was running close to an existing designated environmentally-sensitive habitat. So ultimately, there were issues about obtaining that easement from the adjacent property owner. In fact, the property owner declined to grant the easement. So the applicant then went back and looked at options and came up with one where essentially there are some onsite improvements, but they don't require any offsite improvements. And that's based on the fact that we would not be increasing runoff from the property, and we would not be changing the existing drainage patterns. And that's why those were actually, we actually included a condition of approval for verification of that and further review prior to recordation of this map in conjunction with flood control to ensure that, that that is the case.
I would have two, two comment questions related to that, then. Was any thought given to requiring, for instance, in the driveway design, that that be made of a permeable surface? And if so, I mean, I didn't see it as one of the conditions, but...
That's correct, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. We had discussions with flood control and the applicant. We do have the applicant's engineer, so we may want to address several of those questions. But when we met, we talked about a range of mitigation measures, which included measures to minimize the permeable, impermeable surfaces on the property, and they did include discussions of that. And some of those measures will be further developed in the formal drainage plan that's required. Essentially, what we did at this point, rather than requiring specific mitigation measures since we had a preliminary report, what we did is we essentially established a, a performance standard based on what the study says. And the study concludes that based on the size of development that's discussed in that study and the square footages, that there will be no change in drainage pattern, no increased runoff. So we used that standard, and that's what they will have to meet in order to get the map approved and recorded. So we did that rather than getting into too many specific details at that point to give them some greater flexibility when they get in and actually propose a formal drainage study.
Okay. Also related to that, it relates to the number of trees that have the potential to be removed. I don't know exactly how this figures, but experience says that where you have trees, you have more absorption of water, it comes down... you have more absorption of water, it comes down gentler, tends to sheet off less fast, and all that. How does that get calculated in, or was it?
Those will have to be part of the formal calculations that take place as part of the formal study. There was some, again, some very general discussions and recognition that future development would change what it currently exists. But again, those are factors and details that will have to be addressed prior to approval of that formal flood and drainage plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bell. The, you made a comment about the, comment to the negative declaration about non-merger of lots for subdivision. I'm interested in having you expand on that a little bit. What is the county's policy regarding either mergers or lot line adjustments used to create lots? I don't think it's an issue here. I mean, it doesn't appear to me, because as I look at it, although it's kind of interesting, because we have two standards. We have the minimum 7,000-foot, but we also have the, what I believe is the coastal standard of 4.6 per acre, which is a more restrictive standard. And I think it, clearly, if you applied the 7,000-foot size, they could get more lots than four, by quite a substantial amount, but the 4.6 is the more limiting number, but because they don't have enough land to get to five units, I believe, is how that works. But I'm just curious as to how that ties in with, when you have two lots, and whether they're considered individually or collectively.
Mr. Chair, we did give that consideration, and what the comment was essentially, was, quote, "Merging lots in order to get more parcels is a dangerous precedent," et cetera. What we did is, we approached that from a standpoint of consistency with, again, the size limitations and the density requirements. And we found that there are no restrictions on merging lots and using that technique to then essentially create additional lots, as long as you can meet the size and density requirements, and everything else is found consistent. In this case, for example, we found that creating the new lot lines would pass through existing structures. So that's why there's actually a requirement to demo those structures prior to recordation. Just for background purposes, this application actually was originally submitted as a track map for five parcels. However, when we got into the review, we discovered and pointed out the same fact that you did, that you not only have to meet the minimum parcel size, which is 7,000, but you have to meet the density requirement. And we found that the five lots exceeded that density requirement, even though they met the 7,000-square-foot minimum.
Seven is simply a minimum. You can't go below.
Yes, exactly.
Not the average.
So then they withdrew the application and resubmitted for the parcel map. So we'd given that quite a bit of consideration, and had quite a bit of discussion with the applicant regarding the size. And so that's why this provision here, once we concluded that the size and density were consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, we felt that it didn't warrant any changes to the environmental document.
Excuse me for going to this next one, but I can't help but ask the question. And I know it's outside the scope of this, but I'm curious, because I've seen it before. Let's suppose you had a lot that was one acre zoning, and you had a 1.9 acre lot next door to a 1.2 acre lot. Could they be merged and create a third lot, under the county's standards?
Yes.
Not merged, well, I guess merged and then re-subdivided?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, they would actually process a lot line adjustment and then a re-subdivision, typically.
Right. Lot line adjustment down to one acre, and the combined would be two, and then they'd process a subdivision of that?
Right, a parcel map.
Okay, so that can actually be done?
Yes, and we've seen it on a number of occasions.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't remember that particular incident where they take from one and apply it to the other, but it would make sense, if you can do this, that you can do that. Commissioner Overall?
Actually, I have one more set of questions. Actually, it goes to the findings in Section C. On page C5, under what is now Item 11, and then on page C7, Item K. I'm trying to understand what the, what flexibility there is here. I mean, we're talking about tree removal and replacements, and when you have a neighborhood parcel that has the character that these four currently have, when you start talking about taking mature trees out and replacing them with 15-gallon trees, you're talking about something that's not going to mature and look like it looked, at least in my lifetime. And I'd like to understand, what flexibility do you have, do we have, when we look at something like this, in requiring a different level of replacement? I mean, do you understand the question well enough to respond?
Yeah, I believe I do, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. In this case, I mean, we do approach it on a case-by-case basis, to look at essentially kind of the parcel itself and the setting that it's within, and how tree removal, in this case, it kind of, there's some overlap between some of the provisions dealing with visual resources, and some dealing with biological resources. So there is, there is a balancing in that case, particularly when we have native oaks present on the property, as we do in this situation. So we did look at it with the assistance of, again, a landscape plan that was submitted that shows existing landscape, and then an arborist report looking at the condition of existing trees and the sizes and such. So we then took a look at that, and looked at the individual trees that would be removed, and looked at the property in its entirety. And what we found in this case is that the types of trees being removed and their locations were such that, given the trees that would be retained, we didn't find that there would be a significant change in the character. But we also recognized that there is going to be subsequent review, and part of that review includes a review of landscaping, which would be reviewed by the Board of Architectural Review, as well as staff. So there are specific provisions for a landscaping plan, and there are provisions within the Montecito Architectural Board guidelines that talk about landscaping and what effects landscaping should have. So we're kind of covered from that standpoint, as well as recognizing that we have measures to protect the existing trees that are going to be retained during construction, and also for any subsequent tree loss that may occur. So that's where we get into the tree protection and the tree replacement plan. So we put in a couple of checks there.
Commissioner Phillips?
I want to also ask a question that has nothing to do with this, perhaps, but is it the nature of the vesting tentative parcel map that a, an assumption as to building occurs? I'm wondering why an applicant couldn't ask for this reformation, this map, and say, "I don't know if I'm going to build at all. I may or I may not, and when that happens, I'll tell you about it." But here, we're getting into, "Don't remove trees, how big it is, runoff, all these things." How does that occur? Is it because of the nature of this type of map, that there has to be anticipated building, identified, and then reviewed by you?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, no, in this case, whether it would be a vesting map, or whether it would be a straight tentative map, it's appropriate to look at kind of the reasonably foreseeable development that would result as a consequence of the proposed subdivision. So in terms of some of the more straightforward aspects, for example, we need to look to ensure that there would be adequate access, and address that, ensure that, for example, it meets traffic and fire department standards. The whole issue dealing with drainage is another example of where we don't want to approve maps without looking to what potential effects would occur, and what type of consistency we would have. So it does require a broader look, and a look forward in this case, particularly when the applicant has clearly stated what their intent is. And in this case, the application itself, it wasn't just an application with a track map, or pardon me, a parcel map. The applicant went to some links to provide additional information to assist. So we had things like the noise study, we had an archaeological study, we had a historic study, we have the drainage study. So those are all part of the kind of standard review we would do, regardless of whether it's a vesting map or a parcel map, to ensure that what we're going to end up is consistent with the applicable provisions within the subdivision ordinance, as well as consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing, and put it to the commissioners for deliberation, and then...
I'm prepared to move that we support the staff recommendation. I have, and that is a motion, so if we get a second, then I'll make my comments, if anybody wants to second.
I'd be pleased to second Mr. Overall's motion. Okay, it's moved and seconded, and we're open for any additional comments, or...
My one set of comments related to this and other projects is, and this is going to go forward from here, it's going to come back to the MBAR at some point, and then it'll come back to us. And I'm concerned that there are representations in here, as there are on every project, that we're relying on, that we expect to see in what comes forward. Now, this may come back to us as one project, or four separate projects, I don't know how it's going to come back to us. But we're relying in part on the March 8, '08 submittal of the size, square footage, that's going to be built on the parcel. Are you back with us?
I had somebody else with us for a while.
We're relying on a careful review of the drainage issue, and possible consideration of a permeable surface, and all that. And we've got this issue about the landscape plan, the size of the trees, which ones are going to be removed, which ones are damaged in construction, if any. I just wish there were a way that those concerns would be attached to what goes to the MBAR, so when they look at this, they know that, yes, we approved this, but we had these areas of concern, in addition to what staff has so well pointed out. I just think it's important to document the basis upon which we say yes to something, and have it attached to it. So that's my comment.
Mr. Chair, when a project like this goes to the MBAR, there's a planner assigned to the project, and they would review all of the conditions attached to the map that would affect future development, and I would fully expect that they would apprise the MBAR, and then, forward-thinking the Montecito Planning Commission as to those conditions, and you, both bodies would use those as standards for your review.
I guess the point I was making is, these, the three comments I just made are embodied in the conditions, but they're not, the flavor of the comments are not. There's a difference in, if you look at the tree requirement of three to one, that's different than saying, "It's sensitive to the site, and we've got a landscape plan, and this big tree that we didn't count on dying has died off, and maybe we don't want a 15-gallon tree there, we want something bigger in order to replace it." To me, that has a different feel. If I were on the MBAR, that comment would have quite a different feel than reading the findings. That's all I was attempting to communicate.
Thank you. I'll make one other comment, which is, that was part of the nature of my questions about the vesting tentative map, is that how long a time period could go before this might be built? Because when you make the comments, you do, it's, that's just recording, yeah. Because I think there is something to that, when in fact a project might come forward 10 years from now, because if the map's vested and it comes forward in 10 years, it could well be that a lot of that flavor is lost. It'll be remembered here for some period of time, but some of that will go away over time.
Mr. Chair, just to provide a little bit of perspective, I can't tell you when these individual lots will be developed, but recording of the map needs to occur within three years. In order to record the map, those units that exist over proposed parcel lines will be demolished. So I would say chances are pretty high that, once the map records, somebody's going to want to do something with the property. So I wouldn't imagine this property will remain undeveloped for a long period of time.
For extended time. Thank you, that's a good comment. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Aye. Passes unanimously. So, thank you. Why don't we take a five-minute break, or at least until the top of the hour, till 11, and then we'll come back and handle items number three and four. And to item number three, which is the Road Naming and Time Extension Process Review Ordinance Amendment. Jessica, you want to read this item into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the Montecito Planning Commission consider and adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that they adopt an ordinance, case number 08ORD4, amending the text of Chapter 35.460, Road Naming and Address Numbering, and Chapter 35.474, Post-Approval Procedures of Section 35-2, the Montecito Land Use and Development Code of Chapter 35, zoning of the County Code, and would revise the existing procedures for naming of new roads and renaming existing roads, and approving time extensions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Engel, are you making the presentation on this item, I believe?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair, members of the Montecito Commission. You may remember these items we brought to you in the workshop setting, on February 20th, so hopefully this hearing will go fairly smoothly. The first situation regarding road naming and renaming, the current process for the three different types of road namings are the, either the naming or renaming of an existing road, the road naming that accompanies a tentative map application, and road naming that follows a tentative map application. And under the existing process for renaming or naming an existing road, there is notice to the owners and tenants that abut that road, there's posted notice provided, the Montecito Planning Commission will review the proposed road naming, and a disgruntled person could appeal that decision, if they so desired, to the Board of Supervisors. The second issue with naming a tenant, or naming a road associated with a tentative map, it would be the same process as a tentative map, it's set at the same time, so that the review of the tentative map and the road name itself accompanies each other, and the same notice and appeal process would be provided for. However, if the applicant, under the existing ordinance, so chooses, they can wait until the tentative map is approved, and then follow that up later with a separate road naming application of any roads created by that map. The, under the current process, the director would take action on that proposed road naming, there'd be no notice to anybody, but anybody that caught wind of it and didn't like it could appeal that decision to your commission, and then to the Board of Supervisors, if they so desired. What we're proposing is that, as far as roads that are created by subdivisions in their naming, that we change the ordinance to delete the second process, essentially, so that they would be required to name the road as part of the subdivision process itself. And in this manner, they would both be heard together, everybody that was noticed about the subdivision map would be noticed about the road naming, and again, this would be one hearing, or one, hopefully one hearing before your commission, and then they could appeal both the map approval and the road name to the Board of Supervisors, if they so desired. As far as the naming or renaming of an existing road, what we're proposing to do is shift to a waived hearing process, where notice would be provided to the neighbors and tenants along the road, as far as the fact that a road naming or renaming was, had been submitted for, advise them that they could request a public hearing if they so desired, but there would be no hearing otherwise. If no request for a hearing was submitted, then the director would make a decision, and there'd be no appeal of that decision, again, under the waived hearing. The only time an appeal would be processed is somebody had requested that a hearing be held on that road naming, such that it would then go to your commission for action, and the appeal of that action would go to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Modern technology here. Time extensions was the second issue that we discussed at the workshop, and again, the current process is that when you have a discretionary application approved, you have a certain timeframe in which to... timeframe in which to finalize that action for a conditional use permit and development plans, are the two most popular ones, or common, rather. If you're not able to commence the use or the development within that time period, then the applicant does have the ability to come in and request a time extension to that original discretionary approval. The, under the current system, the notice would be the same as for the original discretionary approval, typically for a development plan or conditional use permit, that would be mailed notice to owners within 300 feet, plus a legal ad in the paper. The hearing, the review authority must make the same findings to approve the time extension that they made for the original discretionary application, and that decision to approve or deny the time extension would also be appealed to the next higher decision-making body. In this case, we do have the ability of the director to make, under the existing process, a decision on an as-built development plan. That's the only discretionary review, I believe, that doesn't automatically go to your Planning Commission for a review, but in the case of an as-built development plan, the director's decision could be appealed to your commission, and then your decision could be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. What we're proposing is to do a waived hearing approach, similar to what we just discussed for road namings. Again, notice to neighbors would be provided that an application for a time extension has been submitted for, and that if they want to have a hearing, they need to request it. However, unlike the previous situation where appeals could only occur if they had requested a hearing, in this case, we felt that because of the issues are a little bit more extensive with something like a conditional use permit or development plan, that they would still have the ability to appeal the decision of the director to approve the time extension, even though a public hearing did not occur. We went to the Planning Commission on this, I forgot the date exactly, County Planning Commission, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Thank you, March 23rd. They did support the road naming process amendment as we proposed, they ultimately did support the time extension proposed amendment as well, although there was some discussion regarding whether or not the, if a person did not request a hearing and the director made a decision, as under a waived hearing process, whether or not they could actually, should actually have the ability to appeal that director's decision to the next higher review authority. The original motion was made to delete that provision, that motion failed. A subsequent motion was made to include that provision, and that motion did pass, so...
So they moved both these forward as per staff recommendation?
As proposed, and as you're seeing them today, basically. And that concludes the presentation on this item.
I'll open us for the public hearing, for public comment. Anyone wishes to address us on this item? Doesn't appear so, so I'll close the time for public comment. And it's to the commission for questions on this, either of these two items. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that in, I've heard of at least one community where the, all road naming is the name of the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and there's no appeals, and it works pretty well. I just wondered if you... More seriously, what is the interest, Mr. Langle, we're trying to protect for the public? What is the, what is the interest that a hearing would prompt, when a name is proffered or changed? And what criteria would we use if, God forbid, this came to us?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, a couple...
Sure, the Gottstanger, I mean, I, you know, I like them all, you know?
Well, a couple of comments in response to that question. First, there are criteria, criteria, rather, that a road name must have in order to be approvable under the existing regulations. First, it must be easy to pronounce, so I don't know that Tilshard would qualify for that.
And you can't spell Berwick, so he's out.
Right. And Berwick. The second is that people who live on an existing street that has an existing name sort of grow comfortable with that name, and if you were to change it to something different, I have personally been through this process as a hearing officer. They, you know, have committed a certain amount of money to, you know, making envelopes with their return address on it, things like that. They get used to the name, they don't want to see it changed.
Some confusion.
They, yeah, there might be some confusion. I'm sure you recall some of the situations that developed in the city, Santa Barbara, when the city proposed to change the name of a particular road from one thing to another, there was all sorts of issues brought up regarding historical nature of the name, and how dare you interfere with this historical fabric of the area. When Santa Claus Lane, for example, was proposed to be renamed, it caused quite a stir. And ultimately, the zoning administrator at the time denied the, that road naming. It was appealed to the board, and the board upheld the decision of the zoning administrator, so it's still Santa Claus Lane. So there are situations that occur, but they're not too frequent, which is why we feel that moving to a waived hearing process is appropriate.
I won't belabor this, because we will probably never see this, I'm just curious what criteria you used when it was in front of you, what would you, what would you do?
In acting on a road name or not?
Yeah.
Typically, you would use, again, there's a set of criteria in the ordinance that, you know, the name must be easy to pronounce, it can't repeat an existing road name, it can't be the surname of an exist, of a living person unless that person has some sort, unless that name has some sort of historical relevance to the community.
Right.
And beyond that, it's sort of a popularity contest. There was a situation in San Inez where they wanted to rename a road, the neighbors who didn't actually access off that road but were adjacent, or nearby to it, thought the name was sort of, somehow would demean their property values, and so they objected to it on that basis.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? And I entertain a motion for, to move the staff recommendation forward.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye, opposed no. Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And we are now ready for our last standard agenda item, which is the workshop, changing the permitting requirements. Secretary Oakland, you want to read this item into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of county staff that the Montecito Planning Commission review and give direction on proposed revisions to the Montecito Land Use and Development Code to streamline the review process for select small projects.
And we are...
We are getting there.
Mr. Engel, we have you presenting to us again.
Yes, we hope to get you out of here by noon time.
It looks like we're going to get there. Appreciate your diligence.
This is another outspring of the process improvement efforts, and this would be a workshop for your Planning Commission to give us comments, direction, et cetera, as to what, how you feel regarding the proposed changes. Basically, there are three items that we will be considering. One is the shift of permits for freestanding solar energy facilities, second would be regarding the overall signed plan process, and the third would be revisions to the ridgeline By way of background, again, this is coming from the process improvement efforts, I won't read to you the criteria and priorities and board action, as you've seen these before on a few occasions. Again, the first issue regarding freestanding solar systems, the current permitting process for solar systems in general, be they thermal systems where you're heating water, or photovoltaic where you're generating electricity, due to a recent state law, we, when we adopted the development codes, we did delete the requirement for such systems to have design review, so presently, there's no design review required for solar energy systems. If that system's proposed to be located on the roof of an existing structure, then it's exempt, however, if it's freestanding, located on the ground, it does require a land use permit under the existing regulations. What we're proposing is to shift the ground-mounted systems from a land use permit to a zoning clearance process, wherein we would do the same review as a land use permit to make sure it complied with the ordinance, the Montecito Community Plan, et cetera, but there would not be a notice to the neighbors, nor the ability to appeal that decision to issue the zoning clearance.
Noel, do you want comments on these as we go through them?
That would be fine.
One block at a time, rather than trying to rehash it all?
In fact, that's probably better, if you want to take these items one...
I'm having a bit of a problem with this, based on something that was in the news this last week. I think it was down in Los Angeles, although I'm not positive where the location was. It related to a solar installation, where they put a solar installation in, and the neighbor was required to come in and either cut down or trim, severely trim back some redwood trees, because they blocked the solar radiation onto where the panels were located. It seemed a little farcical, the way it came out in the news, but I wonder if there isn't a point that should be taken home here, when you have something like this, where it's of some significance, if it shouldn't be noticed, and then perhaps follow the kind of policy you did in the past, in the previous item, where if there's no complaint, then it goes forward. But at least give people the opportunity to be aware that it's going in, so you don't have a non-appiable, non-noticed item that creates, you know, some distress in the community, so...
Mr. Overall, members of the commission, there, I, actually, I'm familiar with that case. There is a...
Then forgive me for garbling the facts.
No, it's okay, you stated enough of the facts, and I was able to recognize it. There is a state law that provides for solar access to property, and again, the purpose of this is that people can avail themselves of solar energy and reduce the California's need to burn carbon-based fuels, et cetera. In this situation, because the neighbor had planted trees on their property, actually prior to the installation of the solar system on the adjacent property, and those trees grew to sufficient height that they were blocking the majority of the sunlight available to the solar system, the neighbor was forced by the courts to trim the trees to a more, to a reasonable height that would allow the solar system to have access to the sun. Again, this is a state requirement, and our ordinance does not address this. The city of Santa Barbara does have a solar access ordinance that sort of does address this situation, but the county is silent currently as to that situation. As to your comment regarding the waived hearing process, we could certainly do that as well, but again, the idea of this was to reduce the permitting, reduce the cost to the applicant, and we felt that, you know, in most situations, a freestanding solar array is not going to pose a problem.
Mr. Chair, I want to sort of, well, I want to make a couple of comments, I guess. The first comment is, one of the things we're trying to do in the whole process improvement effort is to identify permits where, even if a permit were appealed to your commission, the result wouldn't change. And in this particular instance, it's our understanding that state law would not allow you to deny a solar, freestanding solar panel because of vegetation on an existing property. I don't think that would be a legitimate reason to deny the permit. So we're really trying to take you out of situations where there's not much you could do about it anyway. So that's kind of one comment. The other comment is, you know, the county's kind of at a turning point, and maybe we have been for a while, some may think we have, and some may think we haven't, but we have to figure out how we're going to deal with certain energy needs at a county level, and how we're going to deal with greenhouse gas emissions, and a number of things, and I think the Board of Supervisors, and in particular, your board member, is very interested in easing the regulatory approach for some alternative sources of energy, including solar panels for private homes. So just, I think there is some balance in this discussion, I just hope you would kind of consider both sides of that.
I would just offer, I agree with everything you just said there. What gives me pause is not that we would deny somebody putting in a solar panel, but as we all know, there frequently are multiple locations where you can cite something, and then if a neighbor is notified that you're going to put it right where my redwood trees are going to shade it, then maybe they can have a discussion about moving it 50 feet in another direction. If they're not noticed and it goes in, now you've created a problem for somebody. That's, that's the sole point that I was trying to make, related to the noticing.
Commissioner Gottstanger?
Well, I'm going to flip down my line concurrently with Mr. Overall, because I do have the same problems with this, with the not noticing. And it doesn't have to do with cutting down trees, it has to do with that. Many of the lots in Montecito, coming all the way down from the hills, kind of stack on each other, like, ch, 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 they keep moving down, and in my experience, most freestanding solar panels, especially those used for pools, are a very large installation, and the property owner that is installing them does not want to see them. But what that means is that the property owner below, and, you know, you saw, you actually, on the Clearwater project, saw some views of properties in my area, and this recently happened. On the, my ex-husband was notified, he happens to live in Hawaii, that a property owner above him was going to install a very large solar panel, and he called me and said, "Go find out about this." I checked with the planner, and in fact, the planner had not even noticed that it was outside the development envelope that had been established. So when I brought this to her attention, she then brought, and it was withdrawn. What this solar panel would have done for my ex-husband's house, it would have been, all he looked at from his master bedroom, his master bathroom, his kitchen, and his dining room. Now what he sees is a slope that goes up to the house above, not a problem. This panel would have been a major problem, and that's why I have a problem with not noticing it, because he never would have known it was going in, I wouldn't have known it was going in.
And he couldn't have planted in front of it either, most likely.
Well, maybe... Well, no, most likely, he couldn't have planted anything that was tall enough to make a difference, the breadth of which he would have had to have planted, I mean, it was massive, you know? So I just, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, altering it so that it can be sewn, signed off as a zoning clearance, but I have a problem with it not being noticed, you know? So if there was some way of, of kind of getting those two things meshing, so that the neighbors are at least noticed, as Mr. Overall is saying, so that everybody can have a conversation about it.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the only difference between a zoning clearance and a land use permit is noticing and the ability to appeal. So what I've heard is, you at least want it to be noticed, but implied in that is that if the property owner that's been noticed isn't happy, they have recourse. So I'm kind of hearing that you don't like this proposal.
Yeah, I'm not wild about it. Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, I agree, there are problems with this. It would seem to me that certainly you need notice to the surrounding property owners or property owners looking down on these things, because it could impact the value of the home, it could impact their visual pleasure, it just seems not a good thing.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Phillips?
Is the state law strong enough so that the visual component, the visual objection may be overridden? Is it fairly strong? Could I, could I say, could I establish that I am the greenest on the block and have a big solar installation in my front yard, just to go with my hybrid car?
Commissioner Phillips and members of the commission, the state law basically precludes any design review.
What about placement review?
To the degree that it complies with the standard requirements of the zone district, that's about it. So if it meets the setbacks, that would be basically the review that we have, which is, again, why we're proposing to shift this to a zoning clearance, because our review is rather limited.
And that state law is relatively new, is it not?
It was adopted, I believe, in 2005, '06.
Right, because I remember a project coming before the Montecito BAR, where somebody had a rooftop installation... had a rooftop installation and we said no because of the visual impact. So that's interesting.
Yeah, I think that, you know, given the reference that I gave, what should be actually noted is that, is that those, all three residences that were affected, both the property owner that applied for it and the two other pieces of property in which it was visual, are all run completely on solar. Their electricity is solar, their hot water is solar, you know, and there are, you know, solar installations in and around. And what the applicant in this case did is they chose another location. It's not the best application because it's not the south-facing slope, it's a southwesterly slope, but at least it moved it out of the intrusion onto the neighbor. And that wouldn't have happened had it not been that it had been noticed, you know, and a request had been made. So it's just, that's why I keep going back to this, is it's somehow in Montecito, you know, we do kind of, I mean, we have policies in our plan that says we're about being good neighbors, you know? Taking away the noticing takes away the kind of accessibility of being good neighbors, necessarily.
So, Mr. Chair, I certainly, I understand your comments. But I just want the commission to really understand that if we were confronted with a situation where somebody were proposing to install solar panels outside of their setbacks and permitted location, we would probably tell you that that's something, we would approve a land use permit for that. And if it were seen by your commission on appeal, we would probably tell you that they have the right to do that. So it's kind of a situation where you're providing a path that isn't really going to lead to something productive.
Not necessarily.
The noticing part I understand, but the expectation of an appeal is the part I'm more concerned about.
I really don't think you can take away the non-appeal part.
Yeah, I-
If it's possible to do that.
We want leverage for the good neighbor issues.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. It's just a citing option.
You're not unlike.
Just a citing option. If we can preserve that, a little bit of leverage. And the chairman's point that he almost completely made is that some of these laws get changed, you know? I think you were going there.
Mr. Chair, they do get changed. And I think if this one's going to change, it's going to change in a different direction than you wanted to change.
Right, it's going to go the other way. But I think-
It would get more ethanol, too.
I think Commissioner Gottsinger and the other commissioners' points are well-taken, which is sometimes a good neighbor policy. Just the publicity of going through the hearing process or the thought that that might happen tends to encourage people to act more neighborly than they might not, than they might otherwise. And I don't see this as a, I mean, if we, if we find that there's lots of these coming to us, maybe we could reconsider, but I tend to side with the general consensus I'm hearing here.
Mr. Chair, just one comment you just made. I don't think they would be coming to you. I mean, we could notice these-
I understand. Right, it wouldn't necessarily be to us.
They'd still be zoning clearances, though, wouldn't they? Do you want to preserve it as a land use permit then?
I would, that would be where I would be on it. Again, if it turns out that we're creating undue work for no purpose, maybe we should look at this again. I mean, I understand where staff's coming from on this one. It seems straightforward, but could be-
May I ask how many applications there are, for example, in one year?
For solar panels? I don't know the facts on that particular case. They're going to get more popular as the state keeps changing laws to promote them as financing gets, I mean, there's already certain financing provisions that are available for low-cost loans for solar installation. As the rates keep going up, I think the popularity is going to increase as well. So it's only going to increase over the next, you know, number of years.
Thank you.
Just one, I'll conclude with this. We have, in Montecito, as you, as everyone knows, we have, the good neighbor policy even goes as far as to impact the most fundamental right associated with your property where your house is built. If you're blocking some, you know. And you know. And it's not that, this commission isn't recognizing the importance of solar. I think everyone does, and it's indeed going to be more prevalent. But when there's options, there could be a better place for everyone. That won't happen without public, the public being noticed and a debate somewhere, I think.
Okay.
Hopefully, this one will be easy to swallow.
We don't have a whole lot of shopping centers.
You don't have a whole lot of overall sign plans and new shopping centers coming into existence. However, you do have the potential for redevelopment of existing commercial facilities. Under the current situation, your commission would approve the development plan for the shopping center and later on, the applicant would come back with an overall sign plan for that shopping center. Now, this particular subject was more important in the non-Montecito County area because in that instance, actually, the two plans went to two different decision-makers. The development plan for the shopping center was under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and the sign plan was under the jurisdiction of the zoning administrator. And there were a couple of occasions where they said, "Why aren't we getting these things?" I mean, it's a big shopping center, we're very concerned with the aesthetics of it. Certainly, a large component of the aesthetics is the signage. We should be seeing the sign plans as well. And so, again, we are changing it for the county. We think it would be good to, in this case, that really the only change would be is to require that the overall sign plan be submitted along with the development plan for the shopping and center itself so they're both considered by your body at the same time. You have the full, the project in front of you instead of it being bifurcated as the current system allows. Again, yeah, you're not going to see too many large shopping centers going in, but you are going to see, I'm sure in the future, some redevelopment of existing shopping areas. The old Maro Cessna property comes to mind, which I believe is going through the application review process right now. And if this gets adopted, they would then have to get their signage act together.
It seems like good planning to have, see it all as a single package. Any other, any comments on this from the commissioners? No. So, please proceed.
And we save the best for last. The ridgeline hillside development standards, and currently, I'm sure you're well aware of these things, but under the existing situation, if there's a 16-foot drop in elevation within 100 feet of the footprint of the structure, then that structure must be reviewed by the Montecito BAR under the hillside design, I'm sorry, hillside ridgeline development standards. And those development standards impose certain criteria on that structure, most importantly, height limits within the rural area, limited to 16 feet in height, and within the urban area, limited to 25 feet in height. One thing important to remember, however, is that in Montecito, basically, all structures have to go through the designer review process. So even if they're exempted from the ridgeline hillside development standards, they would still have to go through the Montecito BAR for the structure itself because of the requirements of the land use and development code. However, strictly under the application of the ridgeline hillside standards, there are certain exemptions that are already provided for in those, in that ordinance. First is that windmills or water tanks used for, thank you Diane, used for agricultural purposes are exempt. Poles, towers, antennas used for public utility facilities are exempt under the existing design standards. If the Montecito BAR determines that the standards would inordinately restrict the development of that, of that lot, or would, or if the exemption was granted to the, basically the height, that would result in better design, the MBR may exempt a structure from the standards. And lastly, if the, if the drop in elevation results from a minor topographic alteration such as a creek runs through the property and that's why the 16-foot drop occurs, then the director has the ability to exempt the structure, again, from the ridgeline hillside development standards. What we're proposing is that we add two additional exemptions. Again, this would just be exemptions from the hillside ridgeline standards. They would still have to go through the Montecito BAR designer review process. The first of these additional exemptions would be for minor additions to existing structures that would meet those four criteria. First, that the addition is 500 square feet or less, and the height of the addition does not exceed the roof ridgeline of the existing structure. That the exterior appearance of the addition reflects the style of the existing structure and that the same exterior materials and colors are used for the addition. In other words, it's a fairly modest addition. It blends in exactly with the existing structure. It's no taller than the existing structure. The second exemption is a little more, or a little broader in that it would exempt structures that are not visible from public roadways or other areas of public use. This would include hiking trails, public parks, things where the public is able to go and enjoy the area and the surroundings. Staff would determine this, is when somebody came in for an application through site visits or mapping or other data as necessary. Lastly, the proposal is also to expand the minor topographic variation examples, to give more examples, to provide more guidance to staff as to what can be exempted under that basis. And last thing on this slide is that the Oversight Committee is still discussing this proposal, and so they're going to be taking it up again in the latter week of this month to provide additional comments.
So, Mr. Chair, before-
Director Bligh.
Before the commission provides us comments, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. In Montecito, as Noel indicated, regardless of whether something is found to trigger hillside and ridgeline guidelines, the Montecito BAR would be the, would review a development proposal. So the structures not being visible from public roadways would be an issue that the Montecito BAR would be reviewing as well as staff. In other words, if, if they believed that we had given the applicant assurances that the hillside and ridgeline guidelines did not apply, and they found that they did based upon their review, they would be able to, to trigger that requirement. So I just wanted to make that clear. That's not the case in other areas of the county where Board of Architectural Review may only be required because of the hillside and ridgeline ordinances. And the other point I wanted to make clear is, this is not a concept that came out of the Oversight Committee. Many of the ideas that you've seen over the last few years came directly from the Oversight Committee. This actually came directly from the Board, similar to the solar permitting issue. The Board of Supervisors, in the context of considering the extension of the four Boards of Architectural Review, the county took the countywide BAR and made it into three regional BARs. In the context of considering extension of those, the Board directed that we look at the hillside and ridgeline ordinances or ordinance and come up with some additional refinement of the ordinance to clarify when it should and shouldn't apply. So I just didn't want you to think that this particular measure originated from the Oversight Committee. It didn't, and I think that some of them would not like it.
Right, okay. Thanks for making that clarification. So this was staff after the Board directed you to look at it. You've said, "Here's some changes we think might, might be useful."
Right, that's correct.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, in Montecito, this may be, depending on your perspective, more or less important. In other areas of the county, there, the hillside and ridgeline ordinance is determinative in many instances of whether something goes to the BAR. So it's, in some respects, more important determination.
Thank you. Let's see, at this point, that's the, that ends staff's presentation on these three items. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I do have a speaker slip here, so I'm going to open it for, for public comment. And I have a speaker slip from Bill Palladini. And if there's anyone else who wishes to address us, now would be the time to submit a speaker slip.
Good, still morning. Good morning. This is an interesting issue, and I'm referring now to the hillside ridgeline height exemptions. And the, our Board has sent you a letter dated April 10th, and it was unanimously approved to be sent. And it basically expresses our concerns as to why this should take place. It seems to be contrary to the intent of the community plan. And with all due respect to the Montecito Board of Architecture Review, we understand that these projects would be seen by BAR anyway, but based on the comments I just heard, it would be left up to them to determine whether this oversized structure could be seen from a trail, a road, or somewhere else. And that's the part, I think, that gives us a problem, is who determines this? How long is this going to be not visible? From what location? The trail that's there today may not be there, there may not be a trail there today, there may be a trail there tomorrow. How about a road? And these structures are going to be there for a long, long time. And we really don't see how it's in the community's best interest to grant an exemption like this. It seems like the standards are fair, they're evenly applied by, to everyone. This would seem to introduce another level of review or permitting or discretion, which doesn't seem appropriate in this very sensitive hillside area. So it seems like if the goal is to simplify things, this certainly doesn't go toward that. And it's just, it really just, at the bottom line, just does not seem to be consistent with the Montecito Community Plan and protecting the hillsides. So that's my comment on that. Could I comment just for one moment on the solar thing?
Sure.
Because there was no comment for that.
No, please.
I would just say that, and I think I could speak for the Board on this, that we would support installation of solar facilities where appropriate. I think it's a place where we're all thinking about maybe having to go someday. I think it's, it's good thinking, but I do think, and I think that, your sense, I would certainly echo that, I think that notification of neighbors would be extremely important and that is also consistent with the community plan and good neighbor policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Palladini, do you, do you think any of these additional exemptions would make sense?
Thanks for asking. The only one-
I realize they're inclusive, but I just wondered if there's anything in that direction where you think there might be, might be something that's, because I under, if you look at this, I think they're trying to get it down to the point where minor variations could be handled. I know there's a sensitivity right now, given the past, you know, what we've seen in the last year in this area, so might not be the best time for this to be in front of us in terms of our sensitivity, but I am curious as to your take on it.
The only other, the only one I saw up there when the slide first came up, and I'm glad it's still up there, is that, I can refer to it, is that expanding the minor topographic variations on the 16-by-100 slope calculation, who would make that determination? Who would, who would make that expansion of discretion of what constitutes a minor topographic variation? In other words, to make it a broader, it seems like they want to broaden the definition of minor topographic. Who would make that determination?
Well, I think that they were thinking if it was less than 100,000 yards of cut and fill, that it would-
Well, it seems that, referring to a prior slide, that you can get exempted on a 16-by-100 calculation if it's determined to be a minor topographic variation. It seems what they're doing here is they're trying to expand the definition of that, and that gives me reason to be concerned because-
I apologize for being flip about it, but I understand your concern is who decides what's minor.
Who decides and what is minor? Is it, is it geology? Is it prior grading? What's happened to the site over time? We've, I've seen, we've seen examples in the community where perhaps there was some minor reshaping or some reshaping of the property at some prior time without actual development taking place, and then it's granted, that, that comes to a new project and suddenly it's no longer 16-by-100. So I, I would say where I'm concerned, I would be concerned about that as well. The other things don't seem to be quite as important, and I think it could be managed by BAR, and I would trust their judgment on most of those, but these two in particular would give me reason to be, or us, reason to be concerned.
Thank you. Great comments.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I did want to go over, actually, one more slide to let you know-
Oh, I apologize. I didn't realize you weren't finished.
I had forgotten I had this slide, basically, so. Anyway, we did present this to the County Planning Commission last week, and they had concerns regarding the proposed additional exemptions to the ridge line hillside standards as well. Basically, to summarize their comments, was they felt that B A R should review any proposed changes to this section of the ordinance. They also had concern regarding the 500 square foot addition, and whether or not this was a one-time deal, or if you could do sequential additions of 500 square feet over time. Also, certain members thought that using a percentage of the existing house size would, would be more appropriate than some random number like 500 square feet. So, if your house was 4,000 square feet, maybe using 10% as, as a upper, upper limit. Again, whether or not you could do cumulative additions, and lastly, how to determine public, or visibility from public areas. In regards to the Speaker's comment regarding minor topographic alterations, what we're proposing to do is add in additional examples, so that it provides guidance to staff and the applicants as to when a 16-foot drop is really not a hillside situation, because that's the purpose of these development standards, is controlled developments on ridge lines and hillsides. And when you have a fairly flat piece of property that suddenly takes a dive because of a creek or a gully, and then comes right back up again, that's really not a hillside situation. And then the director would have the ability to make that determination as to the exemption. So, in answer to the question, it would be the director's responsibility to make that determination.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Director Bligh.
Just one, one final comment before we get comments from your Commission. The comments from the County Planning Commission that you see on this screen are not consensus comments. So, these are individual comments we heard, so I don't want you to walk away with the impression that all, or at least three of the Montecito, or the County Planning Commissioners were concerned about the 500 square foot addition. It was individual comments.
Thank you. I do want to close the public comment time period, so it's back to us. I do have a question. The, the 500 square feet is, could that be attached or detached?
The thinking was that this, this would be attached to an existing structure.
Okay, because that, I, I didn't get that was clear from that. So, accessory buildings, because I know they are limited in the hillside overlay, but they would, under this proposal, they would still require the same permitting processes that exist currently.
Right. Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just to be very clear, this isn't just limited to the hillside overlay, and it's not just limited to R M Z. It's limited to any situation where there's a 16-foot drop in elevation within 100 feet.
Thank you, thank you for making that clarification. Commissioner Gottsinger, I believe you were, had your light on first.
Well, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
If you're ready, we're ready.
Okay. Well, I, I just think, given, given that we just went through a process for the last two or three months trying to strengthening our, our hillsides, and, and how we protect our hillsides, this seems like it's somewhat going in the opposite direction from what we've been trying to do in the past, or in at least the past few months that we've been doing. But given that said, that said, I, the additions, the additions to structures that meet all the following criteria, the first bullet point under the exemptions, for me personally, I, I, that makes sense. I mean, it really does make sense. You know, a small addition that can't be seen from anywhere, why not? You know, and we actually have, you know, distinguished that 500 square feet, you know, I mean, I couldn't in any way support something that said 10%, given the size of houses in Montecito. You know, 10% of 5,000 square feet is a lot, you know? So, I think, for me, that, you know, keeping it inside a given number is more appropriate than going to a percentage, just to respond to that other slide. Where I have a major, major problem with these exemptions is bullet point two. Structures that cannot be viewed from public roadways or other areas of public use. Well, so what if we exempt the structure? What then happens to all of the impacts that created by getting to the structure, and everything else that seems to, the clearing of the brush? Everything that happens that then becomes a problem? You know, how does that get dealt with if it's just now exempted? I mean, yeah, I'm sure that the planners will be looking at all of that, and, but once we've exempted a structure, and I get that M B A R is going to be reviewing these, you know?
Mr. Chair, you're not exempting the structure. You're exempting it from the height limit.
Structures that cannot be, that's not what it says.
It's just exempting it from the height limits in the hillside and ridge line ordinance. That's really what we're talking about in Montecito, because we would still issue permits. Montecito B A R review would still occur. It just wouldn't occur under the hillside and ridge line ordinance that includes those height limits. So, vegetation clearance, all other site impacts would be addressed as they are now. It's just the height, really, in Montecito that would be affected. So, currently, height limit in most of Montecito, not all of Montecito, is 35 feet. When you get into a hillside and ridge line situation, these additional restrictions on height kick in. So, that's really what we're talking about, is the difference in the standard.
So, what we're saying is that structures that cannot be viewed from public roadways or other areas of public use-
Would be exempt from the hillside and ridge line criteria regarding height.
Height. So, I guess the first thing that comes that runs through my mind here is, what happens if we've exempted it from the height requirement, and then the building gets built high enough to become viewable by the public? Then it's not exempt, and who determines that? Because I mean, I can, I, I mean, I literally can see situations, and I know of situations, where, under the current height requirements, absolutely, you're not going to be able to see the building. You know, I mean, that's why those height requirements are there. That's why we've worked so hard in Montecito to keep them down, and to overlay, and do all kinds of things, to keep things lower. Now, what would be the situation if it was exempted under this, and all of a sudden, the second story pokes up above that little ridge? That if it was inside the existing height requirements, wouldn't be seen, and now, oh, goodness me, I guess now we can see that.
The presum, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yes, please.
The presumption is that you look at the proposal and see if you could view the proposed structure.
Without putting up story polls? How would you know that? How would most people know that?
I think, Mr. Chair, I think some sites would be more obvious than others, and some would require more proof, just like some sites are obviously subject to hillside and ridge line, some sites obviously aren't, and some require a lot of survey work to determine whether or not they are.
But you're, you're saying that the, the only, I'm going back to your previous point, the, the only practical result of this change is related to the height limit, and otherwise, there's really no, no impact.
That's, that's correct.
Because I, I, I didn't, I didn't understand that until you made, made that point just now.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I don't think that was clear from the writing here, but, okay.
Now, as, as I indicated, in other parts of the county, the effect could be more substantial, because in other parts of the county, there are areas where the only reason B A R is required is because of the hillside and ridge line ordinance.
Because of this.
But in Montecito, that's just not the case.
Right.
Whether or not it's hillside and ridge line, it still is required to be reviewed by the B A R, and so really, the only practical difference is height.
Okay.
Just the height standard that would be applied.
Oh. Thank you. The problem I have, the structures not visible from public roadways, is that determination can only be made with the information we have at this time. So, because areas of public use by their nature change, and public roadways by their nature can change, and in fact, decades from now, you could have many visible, very high, well, buildings that were not subject to the height limitation in that area. So, how would you make that determination of areas of public use? And then I have some, another concern on the 500 square foot or less. Is that one, would a property or a structure be limited to one 500 square foot or less? Or a series every year or two of 500 foot or less?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, those are both very good questions. As to the first, I think the only, the only thing we could do if this change were made is to review visibility from existing public viewing areas. So, existing public roads, existing parks, existing trails. And, and yes, they do change over time. They don't change significantly in most areas over time, but they do change over time. With respect to your second question about serial exemptions, that issue did come up at the Planning Commission as well, and I think our intention would be, you know, you avail yourself of this exemption once.
Commissioner Overall.
As I look at the existing conditions for exempt, granting exemptions, the, the one that you have listed, the M B A R determined standards would inordinately restrict greater flexibility and would result in better design. It seems to me we already have, in, in the way we handle it, the requirement that is needed for Montecito. I'm not talking about the rest of the county now. It seems to me we already have in place what allows us to, to do what needs to be done to be fair and equitable in, in the situation, and it just seems to me that all the other things that are, that may be applicable in other places in the county, just are attempting, they end up complexifying what we already have in an unnecessary way. So, while maybe the rest of the county can iron it out, and it works for them, I just think that this is a non-starter for Montecito. I think we ought to stick with what we have. We've worked hard to get, and we have, we have the tool in place to, to make it work. That would be where I would come down on it.
Thank you. I do have one comment or one observation, and maybe I'm thinking about this incorrectly, but if you have a piece of property that's currently subject to this ridge line hillside development standard, I, I don't see how the height issue comes into place if it's, I'm, I'm looking at the exemption, new, new exemptions, it can't exceed the height of the existing roof line. Isn't it automatically under the number anyway, or is this because of previous development? Okay. So, it's, it's things that are currently non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming is how this would come in.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Do you want to compound the problem?
And, and that raises the issue of exactly, do you want to add more mass and bulk to something that's already outside what would currently be the standard? So, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that as well. Let's see. Commissioner Burrows? Or, no, excuse me, that's-
I'm off, I guess.
Right. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. I, I think it's important that we, as a group, look at, maybe look at this from another point of view. I think we have an obligation to the community to maintain strict standards for hillside, ridge line, rez 40. I guess we all agree. This permits an interesting way out, in that, way out for people beyond our table, perhaps, to say to a developer, you can't, you can't be visible, but boy, you can have a big house if you're not. So, don't even talk about taking. We're not taking anything.
Why do we care?
We've all been a little uncomfortable with restricting development, because we know there's always a counterargument that you're taking my rights away. Sure, we have zoning and all this, but if it really is not visible, and the intention of ridge line, hillside, rez 40 is to prevent, is to prevent visual impact, then, you know, we're giving the landowner, the property owner, the developer, whoever, an option. Come into conformance with a stricter requirement, or have a bigger house. You don't get your view, and we don't have to look at it. So, I, I'm concerned, as you all are, and that some of these things don't work for me, but that is something that might strengthen our ability to maintain this as pressure go, as going forward, pressure will continue to, look at this beautiful hillside, I want to build on it, you know, is present. It might give us more legal defenses. Just, just something to think about.
Mr. Chair, I think that already exists unless we've significantly changed the or hillside ridge line ordinance.
Not in rez 40, I know.
Well, no, but we're not talking about rez 40. Interestingly enough, for Montecito, this becomes given, given that, we've got here that it says that then the hillside development standards would only apply if the site was located within the H-Mon overlay district. So, that's very interesting, because really, what this is creating is a very small band from where the hillside, H-Mon ends, and as far as the hillsides, and then there's other areas like Pepper Hill and Eucalyptus Hill where this would apply. But it's, as far as they, what we call and think of our hillsides, is a very small band that's affected by this. What's interesting for me about this is that I can, I can only think of a very few lots that, that structures would not be visible from, inside that little, inside that little band. Then you get up into the H-Mon area and the now rez 40 area, yeah, you've got some big lots up there, you could build whatever you wanted to build, and nobody would ever know you'd built the damn thing. I mean, because literally, on some of those big lots, there's some deep valleys. But we also have in the ridge line hillside ordinance something that says, if a better site can be found, to build the house, build it there. Doesn't that still exist? No, where that record, that something in there says something like that. I can't remember the exact wordings of it. I mean, that's an M B A R thing, where they can say, if you've got a better site, build it there. Don't build it on the top.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gottsinger, that's essentially correct.
Yeah.
In addition to the height limits, there are, are sighting criteria that the, that the M B A R can impose on structures, and again, the intent was by these, the whole of these standards was to keep buildings off of the ridge lines, put them lower down on slopes so they would blend in with the, the scenery and not be poking above everything. So, yeah, there is, there is sighting conditions that are taken into account, but those are also taken into account through the normal B A R process too.
Yeah.
Because they do consider the whole of the site design, and conformity with the Conferences Plan, as well as the Montecito Community Plan standards regarding, you know, site alteration to, you know, maintaining the existing topography, things like that, visual resources.
I, well, Commissioner Phillips.
I'm not hearing a lot-
I don't know if that really helped you, Commissioner Phillips. I, you know.
I think you raised an interesting point. I thought the application would be much broader, and I'm wondering what, I just, I would love to hear a hypothetical where this would be an advantage to someone. Do you get, you just get a, a, a bigger house, I guess? A higher house? A taller house?
Okay.
Well, what I hear is a consensus is there's concerns about the, the height and-
I hear it.
-and visible structures.
Okay. We hear it.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it won't come back.
I understand, but-
You can do what you want with it.
It's a workshop, so I, I know we've been clearly unclear. Mr.?
I just have a question. Is there anything that we could do, or should do, that would be more helpful to you than what we've done in terms of our kind of ad hoc, random comments here?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, I really appreciate that. If you had some brilliant ideas about how we might tweak these provisions in a different way, that would be helpful, but I think if, if you're really saying, leave well enough alone, we, we got that.
I think that's kind of the consensus. Since this is a workshop format, I, Mr. Palladini is waving that he would like to address us, so if you, we'll let him do so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify, because there's, there was a little confusion about, about this being about height, or what the actual criteria is about, that, that in our recommendations, we did understand that it's about height. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes this item, our workshop, so we'll, we'll finish that up. I don't know why the fire department's here. They, they're just curious.
We need to know what you know. Do you want me to?
Well, you're just here. I wanted to acknowledge that you were here, and have been sitting here for a while, and I-
But I, I believe that concludes this item, unless your, your material is on this subject.
It is.
It is.
Please. The fire department's here because we are trying to address hillside development as well. You know, you have height issues, you have visibility issues, we have issues of clearance, and that's not a good word to use. It's like using the word handicap to describe accessibility. You don't do it. We talk about reductions in fuels, and what that might mean. We talk about infrastructure that has to be developed on a lot-by-lot basis. These things are all huge impacts upon properties that are not easily overcome. So the issues you're struggling with are the same ones we're having to work on, and we're trying to find those answers as well. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our standard agenda, and I don't believe there's any other business before us, so I'm going to adjourn our, our meeting. Thank you.